Okay, welcome to today's live stream. This is the latest in our series of conversations with our stakeholders, partners, authorities, organisations within Wokingham Borough. And it's a great opportunity to shine a spotlight on each of those as we have those one-to-one conversations. So we've got 45 minutes with Susan, so don't want to waste any time, so we will jump straight into it. It feels like the right time for you to introduce yourself and just talk about your authority, if that's okay, Susan.
Yeah, of course it is. Thank you very much and good morning. So I'm Susan Parstich, the Chief Executive for Wokingham Borough Council. Really delighted to be here. So Jake said to me, oh, you know, give a little bit of an outline of the local authorities first. So, I mean, you'll know, the council, it's a unitary authority. So as a unitary, we have children's and adult services alongside our universal services. So it can be quite different from other councils and other parts of the country where you might have a district council that doesn't have childrens and adults. And then they have as the upet here, the county council. So here, it's unitary, we've got childrens and adults, and then we have the universal such as parks and countryside, such as waste and recycling, leisure services and all of those services. So, I mean, it's really interesting, you'll know, we're one of a number of boroughs in Berkshire. And we also share some of our services with other councils in Berkshire. For example, we share our legal service with Windsor Maidenhead. We share our environmental health service with West Berkshire. So there is different kinds of sharing arrangements. We're also one of the lowest funded in the country. So a lot of our income to pay for those important services through adults and childrens, for example, a lot of that income, most of that income actually comes from council tax. So that's what your council tax pays for. And in terms of actually the council itself and how we manage ourselves financially, SITFA, who are the, an organisation that actually evaluates financially how councils manage themselves, has actually deemed that Wokingham is in one of the top 20 in terms of actually managing itself well. However, you know, we do have financial challenges. And if I go back to children's and adults and that being part of our unitary council, a significant part of the council's budget is spent on children's, on the children's service and adult service. Of course, when we talk about COVID in a short moment, then the focus has been very much on adults and those who are, who are rescuing services via our adult services as well. There's a lot more to talk about, but that's, that's what's interesting.
Yeah. No, I think that's really useful because we, again, we, I just had a joke about, you know, trying to get you to explain the council to people who all have councils, but we have done that with other partners. And sometimes I just think it is interesting context, isn't it really for what it is that you cover? And as I say, I think we, you know, here we have 17 town and parish councils as well that then add into that and have their own responsibilities as well.
Yeah, I think that's really interesting, that point about, for me, so if I sort of like take partnerships as, for me, is a key point in terms of us delivering our services because I think that a council delivers services. In terms of actually getting the best outcomes though, it's really important that, and that's outcomes for our residents, it's really important that we deliver their services in partnership. And, and town and parishes are an example of our partners. At the same time, the voluntary and community sector are an example, an example of our partners. And again, we'll, we'll talk more about that in a short while, but for me, it's absolutely vital that a council is there to facilitate, enable, it's catalytic, it's, it's not solely that sort of deliverer of services. Yes, it does that, a council does that. And it's really important that a council gets out of the way actually when another body, such as a voluntary organisation, could actually deliver a service or do something better, in a better way than a council. So yeah, put that partnership so that with the, with, for example, town and councils is really, really important.
Absolutely. And I should definitely will, will come on to that. I think the, the other thing that I found really interesting with the borough, because we're both new, because you, you know, you've been here over a year now, haven't you? And I'm in two years. So I beat you on that one, beat the Chief Executive of the council on length of time here. But it's the identity, isn't it? So all of these parish and towns have their own identity. So I think that's where some of the understanding comes in as well is, you know, some of those areas definitely have their own sense of identity and, and, and sometimes when we engage with people, they don't know what necessarily borough council are under as well. So I just, I do find that quite interesting.
And maybe I can come back to, I mean, actually on that point, Jake, the, I think respecting the different identities of different places is really important because it's not one size fits all.
Yeah.
And same way, it's absolutely critical as a council that we understand our communities and we understand the different communities in our borough and we understand the needs of the different communities that we have. I'm a big fan of really knowing our place and knowing, knowing, knowing our population, knowing what's happening, you know, in our borough and our surrounding areas so that, you know, that really helps inform our sort of decision-making and the way that we go business.
No, I think that's great. Thank you, Susan. So as you talked about, you know, well, and we'll come on to this in a moment about the community response, obviously, we've had a really key role working with you and others. But your work on COVID is, was long before lockdown. So I wondered if you could just tell us about that and, and the impacts on that. Because I remember saying to you, I watched one of your interviews where you're talking about having a number of meetings a day where you were actually having to make quickfire decisions on stuff. Could you tell us a bit about that and that wider context of what you've been responsible for?
Yeah, absolutely. So if I, if I start by saying that, you know, clearly, a COVID has been a really dreadful, dreadful virus, and it's had really sad consequences on, on people's lives. And, you know, I give my real sort of heartfelt condolences to families that have lost, you know, lost people in their family and people who've died. And what we sought to do as a council, we've had a number of strands and we've really sought to protect vulnerable people, that's children and adults, which I'll go on to a moment, carry out our essential services and support small businesses and really come together in partnership. So I'm immensely grateful during this, the crisis, that there've been fantastic volunteers, which we'll talk about soon. The staff at the council have been amazing and have really, really gone the extra mile and changed their roles and all kinds of things, which again, I'll go on into detail. And then the voluntary and community sector and the parishes and our, our partners, again, that we've worked together on, in our response. And we're very much in the midst of our response right now, but at the same time, working on recovery. So if I sort of like step back a little bit and talk about those very strands that, that Jake mentioned. So we, at the, at the end of February, we had our first case in a school in the, in the borough. And our emergency team, an emergency planning group came together and it was chaired by my Director of Adults. And that was really the first meeting as in response to that, that, that first case. But then, as the situation started to change very quickly in this area and across the country, a few days later, it then moved into a very sort of like formal emergency planning response. So I was, I started at the beginning of March, chairing the meeting, the council's emergency planning meeting. And effectively, what we had at that meeting and continue to have is myself along with my sort of directors and assistant directors. And, and during those early months, we were meeting three times a day because it was in the morning, eight thirty, around midday, and at the end of the day. And that we'd be meeting at weekends as well because effectively what was happening is that, you know, there was, there was information, different information coming out of government. And it was really important to be responsive to the different information coming out of government. We'd learn about things at that five o'clock briefing and we needed to be able to respond quickly as well as understanding what was actually happening locally. So, you know, we moved into effectively that managing of a critical incident. So the kind of decisions that we needed to, to, to take were, at what point are we going to close libraries? At what point are we going to close the leisure centres? Actually, when it comes to parks and areas like that, we need to keep those open. So we really, again, working with the politicians, we really needed to really think about the public and public wellbeing in this as well. So try to keep services open as long as we possibly could. So there was a lot of decision-making right, right from the start. And if I look to today, you know, we were meeting three times a day then, we're meeting once a day at the moment and switching between response and recovery. So something that's, that's really quite important for us right now is something that your viewers will, will see a lot in the, in the press is around the outbreak plan and around the council's approach to outbreaks. So we've recently, a couple of days ago, produced our summary of our outbreak plan. So if you wanted to access that, you could see that on our website. And so that, that's really, that's understanding and anticipating where local outbreaks might occur and then what our response would be should that happen. You know, what are our highest places and our testing capacity? So that, that's a sort of like right now, what an issue, we've got one of the issues that we're working on. If I look back a little bit more, if I go back to, again, right to the start of when we were going into lockdown and during lockdown, one of, one of the big areas there, which, which again, viewers will have seen a lot on is around care homes. And we as a council have done a huge amount of work right from the very get-go with our care homes. So, for example, we move staff, so going back to that point about staff, we move staff and who wants to move, by the way, to, from services like leisure and from library services into our adult services. And, and they actually helped in, in, in our work with, with care homes and vulnerable people. So the type of thing that we've done, for example, is that we've supplied over 360,000 pieces of PPE to our care homes. So we've got 53 care quality settings in the borough. So we've, we've supplied, as I say, 386,000 pieces of equipment. We also were in regular contact with those care homes right from the start about how they were, you know, what did they need? And that came down to PPE, did they have the advice that they needed? And also, we were in contact about testing as well. One, one of the actions that we did take early on is that, you know, you and your viewers know that there were issues about discharges from hospital. So we, we as a council took a decision on the 21st of April not to accept discharges from hospital into care homes unless they'd been testing, we knew the outcome of the testing, and it was a safe setting for that, the person from the hospital to be discharged into. So we, and we worked really hard with the care homes to actually ensure there was a safe setting and that. And so we put in place a task force. And information about our task force and our approach has been circulated right across the country during April and May. So I think that, you know, that was a really sort of step, positive step we took to actually save lives. So if I move on to children's services, I mean, I mentioned children's services, they have been a key aspect as well of our response during this COVID crisis. So we've really sought to continue to deliver our statutory services to our looked-after sort of children, except we're doing it in a different way and, and through digital and some of it is face-to-face, but, but, you know, obviously observing social distancing and having PPE, et cetera. So most of our workers work from home, but we have been able to actually fulfil our statutory functions. And at the same time, we've worked in a, in a supportive way to our schools. There's been a lot of work that's taken place leading up to the beginning of June when, when a school's open to the wider sort of pupil population. And although of course they've been open right the way for the children of key workers. So, but we, we have again sought to be really supportive. And I think what's really interesting about staff, whilst we've had COVID and the, and the need to respond to COVID, obviously, and at the same time, we, we have, have had to respond to other critical incidents as well. So for example, with regards to that terrible, terrible incident in Reading and the terrible deaths of the, of the three men there, one of, we, we know that, and you'll know that one of the victims was one of our teachers from the Holt School. And that weekend, when that, that terrible tragedy happened, my sort of head of communications and Assistant Director for Schools was working closely with the two head teachers at the Holt School. And so, and I know, I know they found that supportive because I had a conversation with the two head teachers about a couple, a number of days after the incident happened. So as well as actually responding to COVID, you know, we, we, we needed to actually respond to other really serious, serious issues and, and, and the staff have stepped up to do that.
Yeah.
So we've had sort of like children's and adults, so I've talked about children's and adults, should I say? And, and another aspect of, of, of the response, and I think we'll go on to this in a bit more detail, I think Jake, in a moment, is the community response. But I think what I'd probably like to flag before we talk about that in detail is that in terms of shielding and support to our vulnerable adults, we've moved from a situation where we were supporting about 1,850 adults, vulnerable adults in the borough. And that's moved to about 5,000 overnight. So that's really, really a massive number that we have been supporting. And one of the elements of that, that we've had really sort of positive feedback is the, the fact that, you know, we've been telephoning our residents to actually check how they are. So when I was talking about staff moving to, to the adult services, that's the type of thing they'd be doing, literally ringing people, you know, all, you know, every hour just to check how they are. So, so that's been a really, a really sort of positive aspect. And I can go back to what I said about us really understanding our population. This helps us understand a lot more about our population as well.
Yeah.
So we, that, you know, we, we will do that. And in terms of the community response, it's been amazing, you know, the voluntary and community sector have been absolutely amazing because right from, again, from the get-go, we got together, the voluntary and community sector representatives and the council, and we really got together to, to actually say, you know, what, define what our community response would be, set it up really, really quickly and, and then sort of refined it as, as it moved forward quickly. And, and it's funny because in terms of partnerships, I would say that partnership working is an easy thing to do, sorry, easy thing to say, a difficult thing to do.
It's not easy to do, yeah.
But when, 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 when it's done really well, it can be just outstanding. And I think that actually it's been outstanding here because there have been bumps along the way, but that's part of actually partnership work and getting it right. And I think it has been absolutely, you know, outstanding. And I mean, maybe Jake, what if we go back to that in a minute in more detail and I'll just finish off on, on.
Please do, yeah, 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 all right.
And because I, there is so much to say in terms of the great work that's gone on. So if we just go back to that. So if I, so just going back to the council response, we have continued with our, with our universal services. So you, you know, you'll know, we've continued with waste collection, recycling, grounds maintenance, we've carried out road, you know, road improvements whilst it's been quieter on the roads. So we've had some, you know, really good feedback.
But can I just say, because you wouldn't have just carried that on there, would you? You, you'd have to have changed them, which is what's, what for me is just so, I say remarkable, but you know, I, I, I don't know what the sense of the word is, but it's sort of, you couldn't just say, right, well, we just need to carry this stuff on and we need to focus on this. Everything that you do had to be reviewed, changed, people supported, people going off sick if they had to. To then have been able to keep that all up is, is, that is what I would say is remarkable.
That's it. Because it's, it's like ensuring the social distancing and, you know, all of that, as you say, the, all of the practices needed to be reviewed to ensure that we were adhering to, to that.
Definitely.
And, and what we've had to do as well is again, change some of the, the way that we deliver services. So an example is library service. So, you know, people really like libraries and so what we've done is really shifted to the digital offer. So we put a lot, lot, I mean, there was always, I think there was already a really good digital offer, but that's been expanded as well. So that, that's really been really great in terms of what, what the staff have done. We've also, as a borough, supported businesses. So that is, has been through the grants that have come through government. And I think over about 1,300 SMEs have been of claimed funding, so that's over 17 million pounds worth of funding. At the same time, we've been in regular contact with as many businesses as we, as we can in the same way that we've been in contact with our vulnerable adults to actually seek, you know, what are the issues, that, that, one of the big things that they're facing to see what we can do to help. And we've also done a, a survey as well with our businesses. I mean, there's still a way to go, you know, because, you know, economic recovery, our local economic recovery is really, really part important and the council's got a part to play in that. So in terms of, just, and I will be finishing it in a, in a, in a moment on our sort of like council response. So I mentioned about staff and there's been about, you know, 80, 85 staff that have moved, completely moved to have different roles. And, and I think it, it's to move from doing, I don't know, being a librarian, working in a leisure centre, all of a sudden doing with very, very vulnerable people, it's, you know, it's a big, big shift and it's been great because people have really embraced that, our staff have embraced that.
Yeah.
And so, and at the same time for me, what is really important moving forward is about homeworking in the, in the context of homeworking, how we deliver sort of council services and then the mental health of, of staff.
Yeah.
And that's really important to me because I know that mental health and wellbeing, again, that's, that will be, that's a community factor as well, you know, in terms of how these, these, these different eventualities have, have really affected us. I mean, if I think about, there are three things, I mean, COVID obviously has had such an incredible impact. It's unprecedented, that's the word that's used, you know, absolutely. Then we had Black Lives Matter, which, you know, really brought out understandably, you know, lots of emotion and feeling. And then the weekend before last, that terrible incident in Reading. And, and for communities and for, and for our staff to actually face, you know, have that and then at the same time, continue to deliver services, you know, it's, it's about like recognising that, I think.
I completely agree.
So, and the final point I wanted to make was about communication and engagement because one of the key points about our response to COVID has, has been about communication. And that has mainly been through social media, I have to say. But at the same time, we've taken the opportunity to engage where we can in a different way. So if I take our vulnerable older people at home, when we, when the, the food parcels have been delivered by the volunteers, I think that there's been an opportunity there to engage with that, that, the recipient of the, of that food parcel to check they were okay, do a bit of a checking. So there, there have been different ways that, that we have, you know, engaged with, with our communities.
Absolutely.
I think that's about all I want to say right now and then, but it would be great to focus on, on the community response.
Definitely, definitely. And, and I absolutely, and, but we, and just for people who have posted questions, what we'll do is in the last sort of five minutes, we'll quickfire, if that's okay, Susan, just some of the questions that have come up and, and provide some answers to them. But for me, I think so, and it does lead in absolutely to the community response. But, you know, we've had around 20 of your council staff redeployed into our team. And I think that in itself was, was fantastic, but must have been difficult because it wasn't just, can you go and sit in the vice office and work with Jake and his team? It was, can you sit at home and on video call, get to know all of these people that you need to work with for the whole week, for a number of weeks? And all of them, we never had one concern with anybody, not that we would expect to, but there was not a challenge, there was not a, it was really hard to engage with these people, it was just fantastic. And I know that they went, when they moved on last week from our team, were really sort of, they really enjoyed their time and they enjoyed that different, obviously making an impact on people during a time of crisis, whereas they could have been redeployed elsewhere and then maybe not been involved as much into the response. So I think that's been great. And obviously I tweeted you, I think it was at the weekend or last week, wasn't it, about your, your leadership and your response? And I've spoke to you and your directors a couple of times. And obviously Martin every week and nearly every day. But the interaction with yourselves about making sure that whatever is needing to be flagged, we can do that straight away. We can instantly sort of bring that to your attention. And that's worked really, really well as well about making sure that anything that does come up can be fed straight back through. So, so I certainly really appreciate that and I know all of our team do as well. So let's come on to the community response because it sort of does make me laugh without people taking that out of context because I remember the week before, we were tweeting with a couple of other charities that ended up paying a key role. And it was sort of pandemic has increased and you've obviously got a lot on your plate, we want to get involved and we want to support you. And it must have been, so that was, let's say, the Thursday, by the Monday, we were all pulled together in a room. And obviously I'll let you explain this as well, but certainly from my perspective, when we met over a year ago, when you joined, my big thing to you was, there's no partnership working here amongst lots of us. We don't get in the same room, we don't have a common purpose, we don't have a, a strategy that we're sort of all working towards. And absolutely COVID has been awful. I've said that in every interview I've done, it's been an awful thing to have happened, but we have to take pride in the response that has come from that. And, and with having that common purpose, as you say, whatever teeth and problems, whatever else has gone on, we've all had a common purpose that we've had to deliver. And I don't think any of us would have expected that we were doing so much, so much of that work when we all sat around that table. I think we all thought, right, we don't know what's going to happen, but here's what we think we can apply, what we can do. We obviously put ourselves forwards as with obviously the 80 brilliant volunteers, we've got to triage and assess people and answer the phone and help people. My concern was, I didn't want people to get a book and be told, okay, well, if you're this, this, this and this, then you can use this service. And if you're this, you can use that service. So we wanted to be that, that, get that guiding place for people. But we would have never advised the amount of work that we've then done, the amount of support we provided and, and how close we have got to all of those other charities, of which there's at least 15 that come on those calls every week. I'm sure you'll want the reference, but, but I certainly wanted to introduce it as something that I think has been remarkable. And I would argue, no one has had to fall through the net. Our key thing was that no one should be left behind through coronavirus and Wokingham, I believe actually even in Berkshire, was the first council to then really say, right, here's what we've got to do, here's, here's what the community response is. Well, hand over to you, but that was certainly my introduction to it.
That's great. Thank you, Jake. And, you know, it's, I think it's been monumental. I think it's been really, really fantastic. And I, as you say, I think, I think we were, we were the, the, one of the first, if not the first two actually, to, to actually get going and get set up. And, you know, the fact that the Citizens Advice Bureau was the one front door for residences was just so fantastic because it's such a clear message to, you know, our residents and our vulnerable residents or any resident that wanted to make contact with, who wanted, who wanted a question answered or, or, or something about, about COVID, who was in need. So that, that was, that was so fantastic to have that absolute clarity. So, and so very early on as well, there was the offer, so the service was actually offered over the weekend as well, wasn't it? So again, you know, lots of fantastic, that recognition that people need things, you know, at the weekend, evenings, et cetera.
Absolutely.
So really, you know, fantastic from my sort of like perspective. And then to have the link visiting scheme, which is the Talking Buddies. And, and I know that John Halsall, the leader, he's, he's one of the sort of like, he's part of that and he rings up a number of residents and has been ringing up residents. And so that is, you know, so important, that Talking Buddies because of the, obviously the loneliness aspect of COVID and that, that impact of people feeling, absolutely feeling isolated. And the, the food offer was amazing. At first days, the children's charity were, you know, absolutely fantastic in this. I went to St Crispin's School to see the, see the operation, how things were done and, you know, the quality of the food that was distributed, along with other essential goods and items that people actually needed is really, really fantastic. So, you know, such a slick, slick operation is what I'd say, but you, you know, all about the volunteers being part of that. So, so as in, you know, the running of that. So it's, that's been great. And then the, like, for example, the collection of.
Prescriptions.
Prescriptions, can you find that? Thank you. So the, the, the collection. Prescriptions, can't find that word yet. Thank you. So the, the, the collection of, of prescriptions, which I think again was, was really, really important. And like my mum, I remember my mum bringing me up, she needed a prescription, but she didn't live in this area. She lives in, in Flintshire. She couldn't, she couldn't work out how she was going to get her prescription because she said to me, I can't stand outside, she couldn't stand outside a pharmacist, pharmacy. So to have somebody, you know, that, that volunteer is actually collecting, that's really important. That was really important for our residents. So I think that I'm, I'm, I'm just checking that I'm, I'm mentioning that, that all, all of the, all of the charities that, that I need to mention. So I've got the link visiting scheme, Wokingham Food Bank, the Volunteer Centre and First Day Children Charity, and of course, M C A B. And, and, and the, you know, it's.
Well, what I would say, if, because, because you, you, you wouldn't be able to mention all of the charities that we're involved in. I think that is the key is, because, you know, we've got a list of, of some and there's loads of stuff, obviously the food banks as well, there's the likes of the Cowshed, there's funders like United Charities who've given stuff, to laptops and stuff to people, cookers that have needed that. There's been so many that, that have had involvement and obviously the neighbourhood groups as well, obviously I'd see one to mention.
Very true. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's, thank you for that, Jake. That, that's, that's absolutely spot on. So, yeah, I mean, I, I was looking at some of the, the figures and, and you'll probably have really, really up-to-date figures. But in terms of the distribution hub, you know, delivering to over eight hundred, over eight hundred households and, you know, over four thousand deliveries done, done to date. I, I think just under eight hundred prescriptions actually picked up. Fortnightly telephone checks to over sixteen hundred people. It's, it's really, really massive in terms of that connecting, connecting with, with our residents, providing, you know, that support and at the same time real provision. So it's, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's really, really.
But I think the other key thing to remember, because I think, I was having a conversation with someone else about this earlier this week, that it's really, now that we are coming out of lockdown and we've both acknowledged it's still very difficult for a lot of people and there's so much more challenges to deal with. And, and, and certainly my heart at the moment is going out to people who are at risk of redundancy and facing those type of conversations at the moment. It must be really difficult. But, but I think it is easy to look back at some of those stats and say, okay, well, all these people went and got prescriptions or went and got food. But, you know, the hub was set up within a week. All of our team were mobilised to work from home within two days and just got on with it. No, no, no hassle, no arguments, no, what about this? What about that? I haven't got this. People all just then, and, and the prescriptions as well. You know, I remember when our volunteers were taking the calls at the start. Some of these people who, who, again, you will certainly know through, through having responsibility for adult services, as you just say, as well in the council, that a lot of our older people want to retain independence. They don't want to be vulnerable just because they're, they're an older. So the issue was the prescription, the pharmacy queues were four hours, three hours long. You, you just couldn't do it. As you say, you couldn't risk it anyway, but then you couldn't stand out sometimes in this weather as well. So if the fact the volunteers were then prepared to sort of step up straight away, do that, while also not necessarily still knowing the risks, you know? So we didn't, we still were trying to figure out coronavirus while that was all going on. So, so I think the, the key thing there for, for me was, community response is fantastic. It was needed to be led and that was then led by the council. So, you know, so we are absolutely firmly proud, obviously of the, the role we've played and we will continue to, to shout about that. But it would have been so much more difficult if the council hadn't put that leaflet out to everyone's door within those two days of us agreeing about what all our roles were, where people can get in touch with us. As I've talked about with Martin, who's your assistant director from Adult Services that's then leading this. Whenever we, H U K, who are also involved, who've raised recently issues around mobility for people who've been stuck at home, whenever that's raised, by the time we have the next meeting in the two days' time, there's an action plan, there's a team at the council that are then going to be involved in supporting this. Or the comms team are putting messages out to reassure people. You know, we, we could have just went off and all done this on our own and all tried to do what we all felt was best. But that coordinated approach has just been so vital. So I think the message I would, although I know the answer because I'm involved in the conversations, the question I sort of would ask you, just for, for, for that message to people. And I think actually it does tie in with Deb's question. So let's put Deb's up as well. What, 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 my question is the partnership working. So what is the partnership working that you see for the future? And obviously Deb, Deb's, who's no relation to me at all, we say this every time she asks a question or comes on, says around, what's your commitment at the council to ensure that you continue to support the voluntary sector post March twenty-one? I think that will be when budgets are much tighter.
I, well, if I, if I answer Deborah's question first, that I think absolutely, I have a commitment on behalf of the, the council. We have a commitment to the voluntary and community sector because I, for me, to deliver the best outcome for our residents, we absolutely need to do that in partnership. And yes, we have financial challenges. I mean, you'll know about those in terms of the, the, the financial sort of like gap that, that, the, the COVID nineteen has presented the, the, the council. However, if we are really going to continue to address, excuse me, the challenges, we need, it's got to be done in partnership. And this is where innovation and creativity are so important. So it's not about silo cuts, excuse me, it's not about silo cuts, council. It's, it absolutely is, how, how do we do the very best for our residents? For, as a council, the only reason we exist is for our residents. So how do we do the best working with our partners and for our residents? So it's, yeah, it's not, we, we, we do have financial challenges, but it's not about making silo cuts. It's about that, doing things differently. So I have an absolute, an absolute commitment to that as well as partnership working. Because I think it would be an absolute mistake not to go down the road of partnership and volunteer. So we would do our residents a disservice.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that's just a good time to bring over a comment from one of the residents, Amber, who's put, it was such a good idea to use in device for the primary contact offering that sort of service. And I think, a, a, again, you know, because we, we obviously do so, what we were keen on is the advice and information services are just as important, obviously throughout this time. Arguably more so now in the future as that stuff increases. But you talk about, for example, businesses. We were having a lot of self-employed people at the start, which was when we contacted you initially i- in mid-March, concerned around being able to afford to live over those couple of months as we knew that lockdown was about to come into play. So it just felt sensible that that was, that there was no wrong reason to call. And the reason I say that no wrong reason was, we didn't go out and deliver the food and we didn't go and collect the prescriptions. So other charities, other brilliant leaders and, and volunteers then went out and done that work. But there was at least that one central point that we weren't ever going to need to redirect you elsewhere because you've called the wrong number. It was always, it was always a sensible thing to do.
And I, and I think what's on, on that point and, and other, the other great work that's been done with, like, as you've said, a whole range of charities. We must not forget, I mean, I, and I'm, I'm talking, when I'm saying we, I'm talking about the council now, it's, it's about knowing what's been achieved and building on that and learning from that. So we're not, you know, we're, we're not starting from a zero base here. We're starting from a fantastic base. And, and of, of, of work and elements of work that have just gone so well. So that, like you say, the front door, that single point of contact has worked so well. So this is not about just going back to what it was before. It's about actually, you know, we really need to look at this.
Absolutely. That's great. Thank you, Susan. And there's just a, a couple more of these quickfire questions. So we've got one from Persona here around reading an article on BBC about the aftermath on COVID infected individual physically and psychologically, that's psychologically, isn't it? Or physically, yeah, psychologically it must be. With W B C being involved in the recovery of those individuals, was that more for the N H S?
Again, this, this will be partnership. So for me, absolutely, the mental health, wellbeing and wellbeing is, 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 is a part of our health and wellbeing board, you know, and it, and it's absolutely something that, that we should address in partnership. So it will be the N H S on their own. It will be, we will be, we have a public health responsibility as a council. So, so absolutely, it's, again, it, we must act together on it.
And, and I think what I, I would say, definitely obviously not a spokesperson of W B C, but in terms of the, the partnership board that we've got at the moment, the group, voluntary sector action group, mental health has come up a lot. And I know that there is a willingness of, of W B C to bring in more community-led mental health services and just trying to find what that right approach is at the moment. Tony has asked here, a lot seems to happen quickly to address homelessness, absolutely, during the pandemic. What is the scope to keep this up in coming years?
And I, I think, I think that it's an absolute priority to keep it, to keep this up. You know, this is the approach that's been adopted. So I know from talking to the portfolio holder that absolutely that, that, that he wants to keep this, this going. So again, it's like, you know, this is, this is, we, we, we should absolutely not lose the great, the momentum that's been gained.
Absolutely right.
And I know, I know that the politicians, you know, the leader, the deputy leader absolutely feel like that.
Yeah, which is great because we do, we do need that wider commitment as well. Claire has asked here, oh, well, actually said she would like to place the school's response to reopen and the steps are put in place to ensure that children could get their education. And as you say, I know that that was the way throughout as well, throughout the pandemic. And the last question we currently have at the moment here is from Rob, saying, go forwards, how will the council do things differently? What will be the legacy learning? I kind of just said, because we, we obviously was mentioning before you went on about the staff engagement that you've been having on over video call as well. And I just wondered whether that fits in as well about doing things differently.
Yeah, that, that's a good, that's a good point, Jake. So something that I did yesterday, I think before, forgotten already, which was like a, like a digital chat with staff, there was about three hundred staff. And I, I sort of, you know, talked through our response and then at the same time, it was more about to have a very much an informal sort of chat. People to have, you know, really easy access to me who normally wouldn't have easy access to me. And to, to, you know, ask me sort of questions. So I was asked questions around my values, my resilience, what kept me going. And, you know, some of the sort of actions moving forward. So I think, you know, for example, in terms of that digital benefit, we will absolutely work, use digital in a very different way moving forward. And my expectation is that I will, for example, do that on a very regular basis, engage with the three hundred staff every week. So, which I didn't, I didn't do it absolutely in that way before. And it's, you know, I, I'm looking to explore how we use digital in a very different way, knowing that we've, obviously most of our staff are working from home. So, you know, that's really important to that legacy point and learning, you know, it's, it's how do we make, one example is how we make the best use of digital. And the other, you know, it's how we talked about the voluntary and community sector, how it's, it's absolutely taking that absolute learning. And then what was fantastic was how quickly things turned around, you know, decisions were made. So if for me, it's like, okay, we've got as a council, how do we get that's, that real movement on the decision-making? How do we get that more often? Because we need to, you know, we've got to improve and get more efficient and effective around sort of decision-making. Because clearly we can do it. And we've had to do it, you know, during, during the, during the pandemic, during the lockdown. So it's make, you know, really picking that one up. And the flexibility of staff, the flexibility, we've got to be a flexible organisation, more flexible organisation. We, I think we've showed we can be flexible. So it's about building on that flexibility as well.
Absolutely. I think that's, I think that's great. I think it's, it's, it's really interesting responses. I do, I do just think certainly with the staff, because my view has always been people you know, they often have far more to offer than what their role is.
Absolutely.
Never really give them that opportunity to do that, do we? So.
Absolutely. I always think with people, people have, you know, people have lives, they have a story to tell. They've lived like, as, you know, you see a piece of, you know, you don't see that, always see the whole person or, or when, when, when they're in work, they do their job. And they've got all, you know, yes, often so much more to offer. And it's about unlocking that. So what I would say is, is for me, it's about unlocking and unblocking and, and helping people reach their, their potential, you know, giving the opportunity, giving them sort of opportunities. So, you know, there's a lot there in terms of, I think with, with staff. And although that goes the same with, you know, our partnerships about how we reach the potential, you know, with the partnership.
Absolutely agree. Unfortunately, we do have to leave it there, but there are a couple more questions. So I just don't know if someone from your team maybe could just reply something on the, on the Facebook, I think they'll be, they'll stay up there. But I think it's been a really useful engaging conversation. So thanks for coming on.
Thank you.
Hopefully you've enjoyed it. Or you can email me after, tell me you haven't. So it's been really useful. There's a lot of engagement and interest from people. And I think, you know, I, I know we will have separate conversations moving forward, but I think there is so much more to figure out, isn't there, over the next couple of weeks and months?
And, and now that I've done this, in the same way that I did the chat with, with my son, you know, I'm happy to do this on a, you know, like a, in a, a regular.
Not weekly though.
No, not weekly.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. You know, I agree.
If, if, if that's, I mean, no point in doing it if it's not wanted. But, but, you know, if, if people find it useful, then I'm very happy.
I think that's a good point. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Well, there we go. Here's your answer. Let me put it up before you go. There we go. So I think that's the answer. You have to come back. Okay. So thanks very much, Susan, and enjoy the rest of your day. And obviously thank everyone for watching this session.
Yes, thank you. Thank you everyone. Thank, thank you, Jake. Very much.